...from 2023 to December 31st, 2022. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Lou.
You did a wonderful job.
Excellent job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
I was wondering how many treats you have.
Thank you all.
You just find your treats, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have public participation. We have first speaker, Mr. Howard Armstead. If you state your name and what district you live in.
Yes, hi, I'm Howard Armstead. I live on Hill Street in Farmville, in precinct 801. Last time I was here, I notified you that Prince Edward County had had a 50% higher mortality rate due to COVID because we were one-third less vaccinated compared to the rest of the state. I've been an advisor to two governments in Africa on how viruses relate to disease. One is in Zambia on how selenium helps against HIV, and one in Liberia about how we discovered how selenium could help save lives, cut the mortality rate almost in half from Ebola virus disease. I've studied this for over 33 years, and I have shared with you a medical journal report from The Lancet, the second oldest medical journal in the world, next to the New England Medical Journal. Explains how selenium is actually the strongest thing to help prevent viruses. You see a lot of people in mass these days, they don't want to get colds, they don't want to get the RSV virus, they don't want to get COVID. COVID is coming back up a little bit, not like it did before, but they've got a new strain. So, I just wanted to point out a few things in this medical journal report. On the first page at the bottom, how selenium is the strongest thing to boost the immune system. That's how it helps you prevent getting colds, flu, COVID, reduces your chances, and if you do get a flu or you do get COVID, it reduces the severity of that disease. On the second page, you see about viral infection, how it helps against almost, it's a broad-spectrum antiviral. So, it helps against HIV, herpes, hepatitis, chickenpox, measles, cold, flu, shingles, COVID, all those things. On the third page, you'll see how it helps with reproduction, it improves fertility, and also the mood. It helps with depression, anxiety, hostility, and confusion. And there are a lot of people confused, so we could help with that. Helps with thyroid function, helps with cardiovascular disease, helps with both high and low blood pressure, helps to prevent heart attack and stroke. And one of the things that COVID has caused is it causes blood clots, and sometimes people die of heart attacks months after, six months, nine months after they had COVID. They would not have died of a heart attack if they had taken selenium, or if they hadn't had COVID causing those blood clots to start with. Oxidative stress and inflammatory conditions, that includes pancreatitis, anything with itis, pancreatitis, arthritis, phlebitis, any of those things it helps with. And then finally with cancer, selenium is the strongest thing to help prevent or delay cancer. In fact, I've got, my best friend growing up was oncologist, he taught oncology at University of Indiana. And 20 years ago, he joked about selenium and cancer. But now the oncologists are using selenium to add with the cancer medications because the selenium reduces the side effects of the chemotherapy, so they can actually increase the level of chemotherapy and have a more effective treatment against cancer for you by working it with selenium. So, that's your health lesson for the day. I've written two books, one about COVID, one about other pandemics, because COVID didn't end our last pandemic. Another one's coming, you don't know when, one, two, three, five years from now. Another one is coming along, and we need to get prepared, and the government didn't do the right thing. National Institutes of Health didn't do the right thing this last time, but they've got to be prepared for the next time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Rick Ewen.
Go ahead, Rick. We can hear you.
We can hear you.
All right. Just be a second. I've missed coming to meetings for a few months, missing y'all. I've been involved pretty heavily with the fact that Cumberland Library is joining our system, and so I've been going to Cumberland Board Supervisors meetings at the same time. So, it was a conflict, but they canceled their meeting for tonight. Here I am, a little bit damp, and I just wanted to say thanks for your support. All right, I'll be back, I'll be going every other month, I'll be swapping back and forth from now on. And the Cumberland Library joining us is, I think, a good thing. We're only about, well, actually, that became official about, well, one week ago today. So, I'm looking forward to that. And the Farmville Library, the Barrows Johns Farmville Prince Edward Community Library is going strong, and we just hired a new person for children's services for the system. We've been doing well, looking forward to the future. Any, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but I just wanted to say hi again, and thank you for putting up with me and supporting the library.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak at this time? Okay, board of supervisor members, comments? Lou?
I'm glad to see you all. I hope everybody will be safe going home. Terrible storms rained today, water in the roads. I'm glad to see you all and really be safe on the way in. Thank you.
Dr. Pride?
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody. And at this moment, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all members of the board for remembering me and the loss of my son on December 4th. It's a big loss to me and my family, but I thank you much for thinking about me, and I ask you to continue to pray for me and my family. Thank you so much.
Cannon?
Thank you, and I'm sure that, you know, everybody here joins me in offering our heartfelt condolences. It was a meaningful celebration of his life.
Thank you.
In your family's church. I'd like to congratulate Supervisor Gillum, our most recent chairman, on a fine job, and congratulate Patty Cooper Jones in assuming the role. And thanks for all to come tonight, and we might have a bigger YouTube audience if we're on the web tonight because of the tough weather, and so often, it's your participation in forums like this that draw our attention to things that we're unaware of, so we really appreciate it.
With you and I, and everything, just glad to be here another year. And like I said, drive slow going home, because it might be something you don't know, you don't know what it is. Go ahead, Cal.
In my case, in town, it were trash cans floating down the middle of the road, on High Street and Second Avenue. You see that too often.
Yeah, Happy New Year. I echo Supervisor Cannon's remarks, and yeah, thank you all for being here, thank you for holding us accountable. I want to take a second and just thank all the staff, Doug, Sarah, Karen, everybody, for everything y'all do behind the scenes to help our board stay informed and help our meetings run smoothly. Y'all work long hours and aren't thanked often enough, so thank you for what you do. I'm excited to get to serve alongside the rest of the board members for the rest of 2024.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, and first of all, I want to thank everyone for being here in this type of weather. Also congratulate past Chair Gillum for excellent job done for the year 2023. Congratulate Madam Chair Cooper Jones for 2024. We look forward to 2024 being even better than 2023. Just ask God to continue to bless each one as we continue to serve the citizens of Prince Edward County.
It's hard to follow everybody else, but thank you all for being here, the ones that are. Congratulations to all those newly elected members. To those that were passed, Lou, thanks for what you're doing, Patty. We've been here before, so we expect big things.
Thank you so much.
Thank the rest of you all for being here. Let's get in the wood.
I'd like to say thank everyone for braving the weather coming out tonight. My sentiments exactly for, hopefully, we have a prosperous and a happy new year, and that the board will continue to strive in the manner that God has called us to do, and that we can do things in His honor. And again, to Dr. Pride, our hearts go out to you. We're always here for you, so you can call on me anytime, day or night. Thank you so much. All right, everyone, be blessed and enjoy the meeting. Thank you. Okay, next on our list is the consent agenda.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda as laid out.
Okay, consent agenda has been properly motioned and second. Lou?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Emmett?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes. Okay. Okay, we're just a couple minutes ahead of a public hearing.
Probably skip on down to number 19.
Okay. On the Constitutional Officers Report, we'd like to hear from our newly elected Treasurer, Crystal Hansley.
Donna, you're off the hook now.
That's right.
Commissioner of the Revenue. I apologize, and thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. For those of you who may not know me as they just introduced, I am the new Commissioner of the Revenue for Prince Edward County, and I would just like to kind of let you guys know where we are and what we're doing in the Commissioner of Revenue's office currently. I have made a few changes. We have Teresa Estes, who I have now moved to do real estate. A prior retired commissioner has come back in to assist with the training for myself and her, Ms. Beverly Booth, so that in itself was a blessing, so we're glad to have her back and helping out. Our goal this year is to get bills out on time. We're bringing some new technologies to the office that I believe will help, things such as we got dual monitors, which everybody was really, really happy about because it increases productivity a lot. It's the little things that make a big difference. So, that was one thing that the girls in the office were all really, really happy about. We are going with, let's see, I've been in the process of getting with Patrick, who's going to be doing our return of tangible personal property forms, to get them updated out and about in a timely manner. We're hoping to do so by the middle of January. All forms will still be due back on March 1st. We are looking into, I mean, we're just kind of toying around with new ideas and just better ways to be more efficient and more productive in the office to serve the taxpayers of the Did anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you much. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can add, you know, one of the things that, you know, Crystal and I've obviously been talking about, things the board's been talking about, things like twice a year, billing and proration.
Yes.
Those are goals for us moving forward, but obviously, we've got to get our house in order, and I'm hopeful, I think she's got a path to get us, I'll say, straightened out this year and get the bills out on time, and get some of our real estate records cleaned up, so we appreciate your help.
Thank you, and yes, again, like Doug said, that is one thing that we're really trying to put a lot of focus on. I think currently, maybe we're sitting about 14 months behind on real estate. We are going to work really hard to get those records cleaned up in current, as well as the assessing on the personal property to get everything out in a timely manner. So, we're going to do our best, and we appreciate all the support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, your close stuff, Madam Chair.
Right on time, but it's probably a hearing. Mrs. Stan?
Yes, ma'am. As the board is aware, the Prince Edward County Public School System has received a total of $6,237,616.37 of additional CARES Act funding for addressing unfinished learning, before and after school programs and other programs. Prior to the expenditure in accordance with Section 15.2-2507 of the Code of Virginia, the board is required to hold a public hearing to increase the FY24 county and school budgets, accepting the distribution of federal funds and appropriation of those funds to the FY24 county and school budgets. In your packet there, you've got attached a copy of the public hearing notice and a recommendation, but also, I've asked the superintendent to come because I know it's a lot of dollars, and there are also a lot of strings to those dollars, and I felt it was appropriate, maybe before the public hearing, if Dr. Johnson could brief the board on the use of those, proposed use of those funds.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you for allowing me to share some of the great things that have happened with the SRF fundings for Prince Edward County Public Schools. First, let me begin by saying there is no local match to any of this money, and this money has been used for before and after tutoring. I actually have a list of things, so please bear with me. Before and after tutoring, instructional mentors for the division, school-based coaches and reading. We have purchased, well, purchased services, which means we have purchased services from different contractors to help us with literacy, as well as mathematics and science. A lot of the progress that has been made at the elementary school, I can say, is due to the leadership, the teachers, and also some of the consultants, really helping us to focus on what needs to happen. We have spent monies on fulcrum counseling. We began with one counselor, and now we have three counselors to address the mental health needs of all of the students. I've I've come before you several times to discuss the post-COVID health status of many of our students and staff members, quite honestly. Fulcrum counseling provides one-on-one support for students and families as necessary. We are spending funding on the new playground that will begin construction in March. We've spent monies on buses to help with our social distancing initially, but also just to make sure that our fleet is meeting the state standards. We have provided retention incentives. We have provided signing bonuses. We are now paying for full reimbursement of classes for teachers that need to get their full certification and/or want an additional endorsement. Now, that is something new that we're paying for the entire class. We were paying a portion of the class. So we've always had, not always, but over the last five or six years, we provide tuition reimbursement, but usually about $700 or $800 per class. But now, we're spending funds on the entire class. That money also helped us to have a family support facilitator that I shared with you several months ago, did not return this year. So that was replaced, that service was replaced with fulcrum counseling. Stipends for professional development teams. We all have, not we all, we have three Zoom accounts. So I was about to say we all. We all, meaning all of the schools, have Zoom accounts because, as you know, a lot of business is conducted via Zoom. So we have Zoom accounts for each school and central office. We've provided our students with one-to-one Chromebook initiatives. I've talked to you about that over the last few years. Also, hotspots and GoGuardian, which is a monitoring system. That is a system that's really important to us because it helps us meet the Child Internet Protection Act. It allows us to see, no matter where the Chromebook is, what children are logging on to, what they're doing on their Chromebooks. Very early on, we spent money on the water bottle dispensing stations, PPE supplies, which we are now actually repurchasing. It is that cold and flu virus season, so we are upping our purchase of PPE supplies. And we spent money on HVAC. So that's just some of the things that that money has been used for. And the money, and I'm skipping around just a minute. The money that you will also be approving tonight, hopefully, is also for the security grant and stronger connections grant. And both of those are safety grants. So we intend to upgrade the cameras at the elementary school. And we also are looking into window shatterproof film for our middle and high school. And we plan to upgrade doorknobs. And these are safety doorknobs so that you can't get into a room in case of an emergency. An intruder cannot get into a room. You just put the doorknob, or the, I think of it as childproofing. And that really simplifies it far more than I'm sure it should be, but that's what I think of it as. So, do you have any questions for me? We've been very, very diligent and thoughtful around how to spend monies. The monies have been really focused on how to improve instruction, how to improve safety, and to make sure that we stay safe in an environment where we have had a pandemic and flu and cold and little people, just to keep everyone safe.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm going to open the public hearing. If anyone cares to address Dr. Johnson's comments or the funding, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you. And Mrs. Stanley, would you like to read the recommendation?
Recommended motion is, following a public hearing, the board will wish to increase the FY '24 county budget and FY '24 school budget by $6,237,616.37 and appropriate said funds to enable the expenditure of federal CARES Act funding.
So moved.
It's been properly moved. And second, Emmert?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Bill? Cannon?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Patty Cooper-Jones, yes. Thank you kindly. Okay, next we'll have our economic development update. Have Mrs. Chelsea White.
Good evening and Happy New Year.
Good evening and Happy New Year to you.
Thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't be here with you in December to present my department's 2023 highlights as I was home with the flu, but I'm happy to be here tonight. On the handout that I provided to you right before the meeting started, you'll find my report, from which I'll provide some highlights. The IDA brought on a marketing consultant, Mr. Rhett Weiss of Deal Tech Limited, to help with the marketing of the hit park. And since then, there has been an uptick in serious activity and interest in the site. I was able to attend my first Data Center Dynamics Conference, which was in Loudon, Virginia. And that was along with Mr. Stanley, as well as Mr. Weiss, to market the hit park for development. And this conference was a pretty big one. It was well-attended, with close to 1,000 attendees. Regarding the PEC Business Park infrastructure improvements, the industrial access road, and the approval of the MOU with the Town of Farmville for the sewer line at the hit park have both been completed. The IDA also, in 2023, sold two business park lots for the development of Five Pillar Meats, as well as the new car wash, which was followed by the start of construction on both of these lots, as well as Wawa. We have increased regarding tourism and the visitor center. We've increased our staff with the hiring of Ms. Molly Kinnahan, who is our part-time marketing assistant, and she's been a great addition to our team. A $20,000 AFIT planning grant was awarded to fund the development of an Economic Development Strategic Plan. A $50,000 AFIT planning grant and a $75,000 TRRC or Tobacco Commission grant were awarded to Five Pillar Meats for its development. We were awarded a $10,000 VTC Micro Business Marketing Leverage Program Grant titled Forever Starts in Prince Edward County. And this campaign, or this grant money will go towards this campaign, which will market the county as a premier wedding destination. It will be mixed media, and it will promote wedding-related local venues, retail shops, and vendors. We were also awarded a $10,000 VTC VA 250 grant titled Celebrating Virginia's History: A Look at Prince Edward County, which will support a new exhibit in the visitor center about our local history, and it will help us booster our efforts to market the county as a tourism destination. So to recap, in 2023, five economic development and tourism grants were awarded totaling $165,000. Other projects we anticipate gaining momentum on this year include marketing the newly accessible lots in the business park that are accessible by the completion of the new access road. Also, seeing the Economic Development Strategic Plan through from launch to end, ramping up fund development and marketing efforts for the hit park, installing the new VA 250 exhibit at the visitor center, finalizing our wayfinding signage master plan, and expanding tourism marketing and promotion to include new branded merchandise and giveaways. So that's everything I have. Thank you for your time, and I'll try to answer any questions if you have any.
Oh, the name Forever Starts in Prince Edward County. Did you hear about that?
That was Molly. She came up with that.
That's great.
It's nice. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Madam Chair, if I could just add, it's been a great year, and I want to commend Chelsea and her staff. It's exciting when you've got three commercial projects now under construction. We just finished Dollar General. Harbor Freight should be starting here in the next couple of months. It's exciting times to be in Prince Edward County and looking forward to good '24.
Yes, thank you, Karen. 2023 Planning Commission Annual Report. Mrs. Stanley?
I will take that. Madam Chair, and Mr. Love couldn't be here this evening, but the Title 15.2, Chapter 22, Section 2221 of the Code of Virginia requires an annual report be submitted to the governing body concerning the operation of the Planning Commission and status of planning within Prince Edward County. If you look at the report that's shown on pages 114 to 117, this past year's been quite busy. We've issued a total of, or at least, processed 12 special use permits, 212 zoning permits, 1,437 building inspections, and we've made significant progress in a number of capital improvement projects. Couple of things, you know, we've, there is still a housing need in this community. We did issue 46 permits for one and two-family homes and additional 26 manufactured homes. I think, you know, there's still room for growth within that, but it's exciting to see the investment of almost $46.4 million in new construction in Prince Edward County. So hopefully, this will continue into 2024, and we'll see even more investment in our community.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll have Highway Matters. Ms. Puckett?
Good evening. I am happy to record any highway matters, which I fear will have many more tomorrow after today's storms. I know that currently, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 secondary roads that have closures on them. I'm not sure exactly where all of those are at the moment. Could be bridges, could be places that are washed out. Sections of 360 were underwater and were passable only with care. So I fear that tomorrow, we could have a lot, a lot, lot more road issues than we had today. So we've advised the schools, and they're aware of what's going on. Unfortunately, if a bridge is underwater, it cannot be reopened without an inspection. So we'll be working and coordinating with Scott Frederick first thing in the morning on any bridges to get inspectors out of Lynchburg down here so that we don't inconvenience Dr. Johnson and the school buses for too terribly long. So, but with that, I'm happy if there are any other VDOT issues. I know VDOT has crews out overnight tonight. I talked to Scott late this evening. And they'll have crews working all night on anything that's going on with the roadways. So in the coming days, if you see something or hear something from a citizen, just let us know, and we'll get it reported to VDOT. But our cleanup will probably take a week or so to get back in good shape. So we would urge citizens to be very careful in the morning as they're going down roadways that may or may not have been cleared, depending upon the conditions of where they live. So, and to please call anything in to either our office, or if it's an emergency, call it into the 911 center so that we can get public safety out for trees down or wires down. Along the same lines, we're fortunate, I think we only have, at this point, less than 700 outages in the county. So, so that's, yeah, that's a lot. We fared a lot better on that than I had hoped after that first storm came through at 4:30.
I just want to add that, you know, I got a text message from sheriff. I know he and his staff are out, and our fire and rescue guys are out trying to make sure that our roads are clear and safe, and they're marking the, you know, putting up cones and flares and stuff like that where we have crossings blocked. So thanks to them for their service.
Thank you.
Two, I got one sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Constituent, intersection of Zion Hill Road and Old Ridge, right out here by the school. Apparently, water is, the cover may be backed up because with the rain today, it was, the road was kind of washed out. So it may be the cover that need to be cleaned, cleaned out.
So there's water over top of the roadway at the intersection?
Uh huh, right at the intersection. And I think this might be dated. Supervisor Emmerich, 5 Forks Road? Yeah, 4191. One of the constituent ideas reported that it's just at this address, man got a junkyard trash pile in the yard.
Okay.
And apparently, he reported it, but nothing, it's still the same. I won't call the person name, 4191 5 Forks Road.
I think our staff has been out to the site. I think one of the issues, we're dealing with a tenant landlord issue, I think partly, but I'll make sure we lay that in staff.
And I want to follow up on Rice Creek, that I reported. I don't know if Mr. Love had a chance. He said he would, was going to go out there and talk to that, those people.
Is it another, another junk?
Yeah.
Okay, junk conditions?
Yeah. They've been a couple of months, so we need to do something with that.
And one of 5 Forks has been ongoing for quite a while.
Yeah. Just need to clean it up a little bit.
He did one time, but it's right back.
Yeah, that was the person that he talked to, you know him.
Evidently, he lives back behind him. And they go right by it every day.
Next door or somewhere, close, right in that vicinity.
Two little things. Let's go out and know the contractor on 5 Forks Road, this Trimming Lemsback is doing an excellent job. And I'll maybe get him to let me know or let us know was it any damages to the bridge that was hit by the dump truck the other day on the bypass. I know VDOT had seven, eight vehicles.
I know that road was shut down for a good while.
And I think they're getting ready to start the replacement work on that bridge on Worsham?
Yes.
That's in 25th or something like that? And they're getting ready to start the work on that bridge?
On Worsham?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that'll be, that'll be shut down for?
Quite a while.
Yes, sir.
That'll be good.
Yes. That's the one, that's the bridge over Briery Creek.
Okay, thank you. And again, Ms. Sarah, event permit?
In your board pack on pages 122 and 123 is an event permit application filed by the Virginia State Coon Hound Championship Organization, and they are requesting authorization to hold their event at the five county fairgrounds on March 15 and 16. They are a repeat event. I think they've had it here for a number of years, and I am not aware and have never received a report of any, any issues or concerns that the board or the county could, should have.
Recommend we approve.
In motion. And second, Emmert?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Bill? Cannon?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Patty Cooper-Jones, yes. Okay, Ms. Sarah?
Yes, ma'am. So in years past, the Board of Supervisors had created the Granite Falls Community Development Authority and the Virginia's Heartland Water and Sewer Authority. And the membership of those two bodies are comprised by the members of the Board of Supervisors, and those terms are concurrent with your board seat. So whenever we have elections on the board, we have to also do a reappointment of those board members to the Granite Falls CDA and the Virginia's Heartland Water and Sewer Authority, as shown there. And then the Workforce Development Consortium is the regional workforce group. That can be the board chair or, in this case, her designee. Dr. Pride has served in that capacity for the board for a number of years and is eligible for reappointment. And the same with the motin board. Mr. Townsend has served on the motin board as the county's representative for a number of years, and he is also eligible for reappointment.
Okay, I'd like to appoint Dr. Pride to the Workforce Development Consortium. Okay, I'd like to appoint Dr. Pride to the Workforce Development Consortium and Mr. Jerry Townsend to the Moten Board. Would you accept that appointment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you kindly. Thank you, ma'am.
And then I think we need a vote on the, especially on the C D A and the Water and Sewer Authority.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that Granite Falls C D A and Virginia Heartland Water and Sewer Authority, the Workforce Development Consortium, in the motion, and the Moten Board be accepted as presented.
Second.
It's been motion and properly second. Lou?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Emmert?
Yes.
And yes, thank you.
And I'll handle the next one, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much.
So the General Assembly created the Children and Services Act, or C S A, to create a collaborative system of services and funding that is child-centered, family-focused, and community-based to address needs of troubled, at-risk youth and their families. Chapter fifty-two of Title two point two of the Code of Virginia outlines the requirements of the program. To receive C S A funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia, Section two point two fifty-two oh four of the code directs that every county establish a community policy management team, or C P M T. Membership of the C P M T is defined as two point two fifty-two oh five of the code and shall include one elected official or appointed official, that's myself, the local agency heads of the desert needs of the following, the Community Services Board, the Juvenile Court Services Unit, Department of Health, Department of Social Services, and Local School Division, a representative of private, private organization or association providers for children's or family services, if such organizations are located within the locality, and a parent representative. C P M T is requesting the board appoint Ms. Candy Hayes to serve as a representative of the private organization. Ms. Hayes is employed by Strategic Therapy Associates located at two seventeen West Third Street, Suite Five. She has served on numerous family assessment planning teams and C P M T teams in the region. She is aware of the challenges faced by families and their youth who will require services administered through the C S A program. Candy is also engaged in the community and successfully found cost-effective solutions for families facing mental health challenges. The appointment will be effective immediately and expires on June thirty, twenty twenty-six. C P M T is also requesting the board appoint Ms. Latina Giles of Farmville to serve as the parent representative. The appointment will be effective immediately and expires on June thirty, twenty twenty-six. And let me say, it has been a struggle trying to find a parent rep, and we appreciate Latina stepping up for that job. So with that, I recommend that both individuals be appointed to C P M T. Terms begin immediately and expire on June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
I move that we appoint those folks, Candy Hayes and Latina Giles.
Second.
Motion and second, Emmert?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Harrison?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna pinch it for Cheryl, and I know we've talked about this before. I don't know whether you all can do them as a group or individual.
Let's do them as a group.
I agree.
So I'm, let me do a quick synopsis of each, and y'all can take one vote in motion. So the first is a V T C micro-business grant. That's a ten thousand dollars that, for the Forever Starts in Prince Edward Campaign. The second one is twenty-three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. That's funding as part of the settlement for opioid settlement funds. Those will be placed aside in special projects and can't be used except for anything to do with treatment and stuff associated with our opioid epidemic. School grant funds, a total of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eight cents. That's, let's see, federal and state funds for school security equipment that Dr. Johnson mentioned. Again, the opioid abatement grant, we received a grant, and we're looking to work collaboratively with our neighbors in Buckingham and Cumberland. Part of that we'll look at, trying to establish a local drug court, but really, it's gonna take a full look at the needs of the gaps in service for opioid addiction. And the last one is approval of new I T equipment. If you look on page one fifty, hold on a second here. We've got a total of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars for equipment purchase to allow the, let's see. I think we had some new servers in that request, Sean. Up or down? You got a new price?
Thirty-eight thousand.
So you want to say not to exceed?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay. So that motion would need to be not to exceed thirty-eight thousand.
Okay, you've heard. Let me get a motion to approve all of these.
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion that we approve these with, one of them, we have a local match, which would include our local match, and to not exceed thirty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-six on the I T equipment.
Motion and second, Lou?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Emmert?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right, Mrs. Stanley, it looks like you again.
Yeah, so Peacock Court Services is located at ten twelve West Third Street. I believe that's the shopping center that has the seafood place in it. I always know it. The current lease agreement between P C S and S R P Corporation has expired. P C S has been at that location since it relocated off Main Street. The lease came, contains an option to renew for an additional five years. The lease was originally approved in, in two thousand and two. I believe statewide realty had it at that time. Property was sold in two thousand and three to S R P Corporation and has been extended a number of times in two thousand and eight, twenty thirteen, and twenty eighteen. As part of the lease, landlord is responsible for paying the water and sewer and the tenant the cost of all the other utilities. The proposed lease of four thousand one hundred and thirty-four square feet is for three thousand dollars per month, which reflects an increase of two hundred and fifty per month. That's not too much of a jump over a five-year period, so I think P C S wants to stay in that location.
Smoothed the board renewed the lease with S R P Corporation for their office space located ten twelve West Third. Operated by the County Minister.
I'll second that, just with, just one, one thing to say. The reason why the board has to do this is because we're the pass-through.
You're the first lady.
I happen to be on that board, so it's a weird, it's a weird thing that, that we have to do it because they pay it, but it's, it goes through the county. Just so anyone out in the audience is wondering why the board has to do this, it's because it's a pass-through through the county. I second it.
Thank you. It's been motion and properly second, Bill?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes, thanks for the good explanation.
Thank you. Odessa?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Emmert?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Harrison?
Yes.
And yes, thank you. Next, we have our county attorney's report.
Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
Thankful we're all here safely together, and hopefully we all get home.
Yes.
Anyway, want to thank you. We did get a, a signed contract for my renewal of my job here as county attorney, and I do want to thank you. I do enjoy serving the community and, and working with all you folks, and I just wanted to thank you for signing that contract. You know, December, a little bit slow with the holidays, which, thankful for a little break there. We are still looking at the skill games, getting feedback from other localities, thinking maybe the General Assembly might do something as far as working on the, the question about the skill games. Worked on the reappointment of Kim Letner that you approved for the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the big one was the thousand and eleven-page contract for Motorola that we, we looked at and, and had a meeting about and negotiated and got that, got that signed, so that was a big one. And I enjoyed being at the employee picnic, I mean, employee Christmas banquet. I think that's a wonderful, hats off to Doug for, for doing that, recognizing those employees that have been around for a while, and it was wonderful food and good, good fellowship there, and I think that's a wonderful event, and I appreciate it being included. Really, we've had some things with the I D A, but as far as the county, we got revved up a little bit in January. Couple of dead bodies that were working on those petitions. Couple of contracts we reviewed and got those underway. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
No.
Thank y'all very much.
Thousand and eleven pages?
One thousand and eleven. It was on a flash drive. That was fun.
Okay. Mrs. Stanley?
Madam Chair, members of the board, a few things to report on. First, I know this is gonna make Supervisor Gillum happy, but tomorrow, hopefully, we'll be issuing a press release on the release and availability of our county G I S data. The county's geographic information system will be available online by the end of the week. Our mapping data was updated in a web application added by the Timmins Group, which is an engineering consulting firm based out of Richmond. Timmins is also our host for the site. The site has been in development since twenty seventeen, and we've still got some data issues, but we realize it can be, still be a valuable tool for local realtors, surveyors, and the general public. The G I S browser will provide access to geographic and tax record information currently maintained by the county for individual parcels of property. The maps and data are for illustration purposes, and the disclaimer says should not be used for making financial other commitments. But people, folks will notice some errors and will have the ability there to email us and help us over time get those corrected. So again, we're excited about getting that cut loose. Employee evaluations, I'm pleased to report that for the third year in a row, all of our employees have received their annual evaluations. We have a dedicated, hard-working staff, and the annual evaluation process provides an opportunity for supervisors and employees to have a conversation about performance, required support, and setting expectations for the coming year. The Sandy River Project, D E Q, has issued a letter stating that even though it didn't meet the regulatory threshold for convening a public hearing, they're gonna have a public hearing, given the significant interest raised by some of our neighboring jurisdictions. We anticipate that hearing will be somewhere here in the local community, and probably in February. I will let members of the board supervisors know so they can participate and attend that hearing. As you know, the solar project on Old Ridge Road, the Planning Commission, back on December sixteenth, voted unanimously to recommend denial of the special use permit for the three-megawatt project and determined that the project is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The applicant subsequently has asked staff to postpone the board public hearing on the S U P, and they have subsequently appealed the Planning Commission's determination the project was not in accord with the comp plan, and that'll come to the board probably in February, so we'll keep you posted on that. Comprehensive Plan Survey is out. We received over seven hundred responses. We've extended the deadline to January fifteen. I'd really like to be able to get to a thousand if we can, and if you know folks that are interested in the future of Prince Edward County, we'd love to have them take the ten or fifteen minutes and take the survey. The governor's office, the last week of December, announced about the A F I grant that Chelsea talked about for the Five Pillars Project. Had the opportunity last night at the Tobacco Commission reception to talk to the governor about that project. He's extremely excited about the ability for local farmers in this region to have a, a meat processing facility that can help get their, their product to market. So we're excited. Thank you, Chelsea, and the I D A board for their support of the project. As we know, that had a little consternation in the first location, and we, like staff and the board and Planning Commission, worked hard to get then to that other location. We, again, appreciate the I D A's support of that. We put out the twenty twenty-three accomplishments list. I'm particularly proud of the nearly one point five million dollars that we received in grant funds, the progress that we've been able to make on capital improvements, and our economic development and tourism achievements. Again, a copy of that is posted on the county's website and social media page. The bid request for sell-off at, at the landfill is out. It was in the January third edition of the Farmville Herald. We're looking forward to get bids in on that project. Hopefully, they'll come in within budget, and we'll be able to move forward on that project here soon. There will be a community solar meeting, January seventeen, from five-thirty P M to seven P M at Salem Chapel at three twenty-seven Rice's Depot Road. The purpose of that community meeting is to provide information, answer questions on two proposed small solar projects. One is Miller Lake, which is a five-megawatt project, and the other is Piney Grove, which is an eight-megawatt project. And just kind of ballpark, it takes about ten acres per megawatt, so if you're saying five, somewhere around fifty acres, eight, about eighty acres for that project. The seventeenth, five-thirty P M, Salem Chapel. That's Ms. Caton's wedding venue out at Rice Depot. We mentioned the Worsham Road closure, again, beginning on January twenty-ninth. The portion of Worsham Road over Briery Creek will be closed for bridge replacement. We'll put up message boards and, and notices, and certainly, we'll let the board know the schedule for reopening as, as soon as we get some information. Lastly, I just wanted to note that we're working on currently three grant applications. First, working with the C R C on a, a raise grant, again, to redo the planning for the four sixty East interchange there at Third Street. The second is the V D P's Business Ready Sites Program. Chelsea's working on that for infrastructure for the hip park, and Trey's working on assistance to firefighters grant. We're hoping to apply for a significant amount of money to buy the radios that are part of this radio plan that we're working on. If we're able to get all our portion of this grant, hopefully fund a chunk of the radios necessary for our firefighters. That's all I have. Madam Chair, unless there are any questions from the board?
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Next, we have a closed session. The.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I move with Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors convening a closed
session for the discussion of the investment public funds in the Sandy River Reservoir Water Treatment and Distribution Project, where completion and bargaining are involved. And such discussions are made public initially. Financial interests in the county would be adversely affected pursuant to the exemption provided in Section two point two dash three seven eleven A six of the Code of Virginia. After consultation with the county administrator and the county attorney pertaining to a pending litigation related to the payment of personal property taxes and contract for construction project where a discussion open meeting would adversely affect litigation, litigating posture of the county pursuant to the exemption provided of two point two three seven eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia. After consultation with legal counsel regarding provision of legal advice for such counsel related to unsolicited proposal for an intergovernmental contract pursuant to the Section two point two dash three seven eleven A eight of the Code of Virginia.
Okay.
Say it again for me.
Okay, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Let's go.